Commissioner Frederick will be joining us by the Internet. First item up is the order of business. Mr. Winningham, are there any changes to the order of business?
Mr. President and Commissioners, there are no change to the order of business on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any questions for city staff on the order of business? Now I look for a motion on the order of business.
And move to approve the order of business.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. All in favor of the order of business as presented state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First aye. I guess we'll consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda Commissioners Hearing nothing from the Commission about the consent agenda, I look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Just give us the thumbs up if you can hear. Ms. Walla?
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Commissioner Frederick, you can hear us?
I'm here.
You have a, any concern with the consent agenda? We've taken four, four votes, or three votes?
No, I vote aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda, motion is passed. Move on to administration and finance. First item up is the refunding bond resolution, and Deputy City Administrator Carlson will be handling this.
Thank you, President Decker. What I'd like to do is, I don't know, Mike, if you can reach out to Craig and ask him if he would call in on a number that the President has open, he has an open line. At least we can hear Craig at that time. Would that be possible?
He's on the screen. Is he getting the message?
He, we can't hear.
I don't think he is.
We can't get, we can't hear him.
It looks like the, this guy's not hearing.
Correct.
And it looks like the chat feature.
Can we chat him?
Well, he just said, is there any sound?
But you could, with the phone number, they're gonna call.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Perfect.
Okay, perfect. So, getting, going forward, I will have Craig Teese on the video or on the phone, and then Mike Manstrom, they're both from Colliers Securities LLC. They are the ones that have been handling our refunding of our revenue bonds from 2013, '19 to Series 2021. So with that, they have finalized the sale, and Mike's going to explain where we're at and any questions that you might have for the, for the sale. And the two things that I want to bring up is, with this sale and refinancing, we are lowering our interest on our bonds. We are continuing with our same continuance of our maturity date, of, is October of '25, and then we are going to reduce our debt by 1.5 million or so. Mike, if you want to go ahead?
Then they have most of these numbers memorized now. I appreciate the help from these people, Mike, Captain Cawker, and Frank, I used to zoom in from Minneapolis, and he and I worked together on these issues, Brian and Tim from the test. This was a refunding of the 2015 sales tax issue from the ultimate purpose building in San Antonio. I think that issue originally, uh, still needs company. They need to have a name change in the last year. You look back and found.
But, Mike.
To the board and company, where Mount Cawker, just keep the record, so we can back to it. Same people, same words, just different names. The ultimate purpose building, the 2015 issue, that interest rates remain on the last five years, four to five percent. So if we pass the reimbursement tonight, compared to my bond cost, Scott Reiner, it will reduce your interest rate to net interest cost, like all in, all your costs, to a 1.13 stick from existing interest rate of 3.965, so standard basis point C P. And those, there's sort of the savings are coming in here, reducing the debt service kind of, um, excuse me, savings. We made $280,000 a year in additional cost, sales tax revenue, based on, you have over just about $700,000, because of refunding now, after debt service on regular basis, probably about a million dollars left in your fund to the city to use on, on your discretion on regular basis. Our present value benefit, with our solution tonight, that's up to the D-Pod, to the 8.672 percent. Industry norm is anything 3% to 4% to recommend we go forward with, but other than that, we're at almost 10%. Everybody knows interest rates are going to slowly roll, it's becoming, we're doing opportunities to ease right now. There's very large, uh, access to bonds right now, and there's large markets for bonds, there's more buyers and sellers, interest rates can be, in fact, there is surplus of such, uh, market interest rate right now. Right now, people are looking for access to bonds, they're sort of sheltered against the, the taxes. As well, I was living in these places, looking for security, so. We've got a market part, that happens, he does this, uh, they got to be a little higher price than what, um, it's a low interest rate, people are, so, um, we did a $605,000, $35,000 loan issued, and, uh, within that, the one time, you pass this, ask for those, like, lots of interest rates, and the money will pay off first, and you'll understand, and you can, uh, and, uh, and, uh.
And we do, we do have Craig on the, online, if he would like to speak of anything.
Yeah, let's, 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 hey, talk about Craig's box, he works, he's been along with that. I'd, uh.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. Sorry, I, I stopped, you can hear this when the online started to work, and then something happened, and that's life. So, um, we had a really good result today, we're excited about that. Different markets result in different, you know, end results that we present to cities, and this time it worked out in the city's benefit. We had a large number of investors, both regional, national, local, who came in. We were able to reprice the issue, which means we keep shaving basically the yield off to investors, or lowering interest rates until we start to have investors drop out of the deal. And the art of the, the art versus the sciences, knowing when to stop, so you have enough demand for your paper. We did that. Interest rates are extremely low, your total cost of capital is going down almost 3% from where it was. Your outstanding debt is being deleveraged. You had 8.82 million outstanding. Because of the drastic reduction in your interest rates, it's required, it's, it's reducing the amount of the new reserve fund, which means we're gonna contribute your old reserve fund, which actually goes to pay down principal. You're applying some monies in the bond fund balance to further reduce principal. All the while, you're still going to start off for this new bond through maturity with a, with a balance that actually gets carried forward. So all in all, you're gonna reduce your debt service by, by what Mike said, about $280,000. You're maintaining your same maturity date. You're gonna reduce the debt outstanding by almost $2.3 million, and your total cost of capital is just over 1%. And so, we've been, we really appreciate having the opportunity, and, um, I don't think we could've, I don't think the city could've fared much better. It was a very good result.
Thank you, President.
Thank you.
With that, President Decker and Commissioners, before you is a bond resolution, and staff recommends approval of that bond resolution.
Commissioners, any questions for Mrs. Carlson, or representatives from Colliers? Mr. Oderman?
I don't know if Colliers approached us, or if we approached them, but whoever's responsible for this, good job.
Colliers, we approached us.
Yeah, thank you.
It's always great when things like this happen, because just, well, earlier in the work session, what we saw, a request for.
Yeah.
Makes that a lot easier to, to stomach that, when we're saving money ultimately on issues like this. So, yes, thank you very much for all your hard work, and staff too. Thank you. So, to Mrs. Carlson's point, are there any questions on the resolution? Or if there are no questions, I'd look for a motion on the resolution.
Mr. President, just, just one quick clarified question. So overall, we save about 2.3 million here with this?
Correct. What it is, is reducing of the interest, plus we're taking 1.5 million from our pledged reserve and applying that to the principal. So it's around, if I'm right, Mike, on that. So that's what's reducing our debt totaled, and going forward, and keeping our same maturity date.
I would, I would move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Colonel.
Thank you.
Our next item up is Friendship Park, and this will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. The Friendship Park, back in 18, I believe it was, that Commissioners discussed that we would be a title sponsor for the Friendship Park upon their raising of their funds of $250,000. Upon Mr. Kramer coming in and giving his report, when they had the joint commission meeting with the Commissioners, they have raised the amount, they have also got their federal grant. So I've never had a document that actually passed a motion to go forward of giving the $250,000 to them, now that they have raised their money. So at this time, I'm presenting a resolution, which would be 21, 2021, for the $250,000.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Are there any questions by the Commission for Mrs. Carlson to this pledged amount?
Mr. President.
Mr. Frederick?
I thought when we discussed this, did we just make a pledge, or we didn't actually vote on it that night? I seem to thought we voted on making this pledge, but.
As, Commissioner Frederick, as you can see, well, I attached some meeting minutes that I could research and found on that, but there was never a vote on it. We talked, we discussed it in budget workshops, and then when the, Mr. Selinger came in front of us and presented it, that's when we discussed it in the minutes, but there was never a vote on it. So that's why I attached those minutes on there, to show that I could not find where we actually took a vote. And then with the help of Attorney Winkle, she produced a resolution for that, so we would have, where we've been going forward with any subsidies outside, we do a resolution, so we have good paper documents of what's going on.
Okay, thank you, Linda. I just thought Mr. Steyerin made a motion that night, but I could be mistaken, so.
I did too, honestly.
If you look at the minutes, I don't, I don't see anything, so.
Yeah, neither did I.
So this is Resolution 21-2021. There are no further questions, I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk, second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions or comments on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item up is the city officials' bond resolution. Mrs. Carlson, you'll be handling this.
Yes, thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. According to the North Dakota Sentry Code 40-13-02, upon a June meeting, the bond of the city auditor must be set by resolution of the city governing body. In presenting a city official bond resolution, we have a two-year term of $2 million liability that's placed upon the auditor and employees, but to make it official, according to the Sentry Code, I'm presenting that bond resolution to be recommended for approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Are there any questions for Mrs. Carlson on this bond resolution? This will be 22-2021. Hearing no questions, I would look for a motion.
Mr. President, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-2021.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item up is the monthly financial report.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. For our financial report, as of the end of May, we'll start off with our treasures report. This is gonna look a little different than what you've seen in the past, because we wanted to show, out of our, out of our treasures report, what exactly is assigned and restricted. So as you can see, no major changes in our checking and money market balances, but showing our net working cash minus our assigned and restricted cash of 60 million. We currently have total unassigned cash of about $11 million. And the assigned and restricted, that can be based on ordinance, based on third party, such as, you know, our SRF loans, the bonds that Mr. Manstrom had just brought up previously in the meeting. Those are some of our assigned and restricted cash amounts. So after that, that's how we come up with total unassigned cash, as of the end of May, of 11 million. And in our 2021 budget, we budgeted to finish the year with about 7.5 million in unassigned And then with that, our investments, currently we have 39.8 million invested. And you can see, a big chunk of that is our pensions, which we contribute to at the beginning of the year. So we won't see any major changes in these funds through the remainder of 2021, mostly just our typical budgeted distributions. Then moving on to our 1% sales tax. So the red line is 2021, and the blue line is 2020. You can see, we started out in 21 being quite a bit lower compared to the prior year. Through the first five months, we're down about 263,000, which is a 10.3% decrease. However, as you can see, in May of 21, we're actually up about 9,000 compared to May of 2020, so a 1.7% increase there. So you can see by that, that trend line, we're continually starting to see some increases in our sales tax.
I would not expect next month to drop like last year. Just hoping.
And then as a reminder to the public, we showed this slide, just to show that we collect our sales tax in two separate funds. And then moving on to our hospitality tax. So again, the red line being 2021, you're seeing a similar trend, where we were, we're down quite a bit through the first four months. Actually, through the first five months, we were down about 50,000 altogether, which is about a 13% decrease. But again, in May of 21, we did see an increase, and we were actually higher than we were in May of 2020 by about 9,000, so about a 13% increase over May of the prior year. And then moving on to our occupancy tax. So through the first five months, we're down about 25,000 compared to the first five months of 2020, so about a 25% decrease there. We are seeing also our occupancy tax start to climb, increase over the prior two months, down about 3,000 compared to May of 2020, so about a 15% decrease there. And then moving to our oil impact revenue. So also, again, in 21, we're seeing our oil impact revenue starting to climb back up as well. We've had our highest collection so far in 21 in May. First five months, we're down about 387,000 altogether, which is about a 7.3% decrease. But as you can see, in May compared to May of 2020, we're up about 294,000, so about a 37% increase over the, over May of 2020. And then moving on to our general fund. So through five months, this was taken from our city website, as of the end of May, our benchmark we are looking at is about 41.67%. So you can see in our general fund expenses, the graph on the left, the red shows that we've expended, which is 38.33% at the end of May. So we are under our benchmark, which is, which is good for our expenses. On the revenue side, we're ahead of schedule on our general fund revenue. We had actually collected 51.23% at the end of May. A big part of that is our property taxes, coming quite a bit higher at the beginning of the year, so that should, should even out. And then for the same graph on our enterprise funds, so the graph on the left is our expenses. So again, with, with about 40, 41% being our benchmark, the red, we're at just under 29% in expenses. I think you're gonna see that increase fairly significantly over the next couple of months, with our summer months being very busy. And also, we have not yet paid the principal on our SRF loans, which is due, I believe, in September. So that's when we'll see that, that number start to increase. And then on the revenue side, we're, we're just under what our benchmark is, we're at 38, just over 38% in our enterprise fund revenue collected. So with that, I'll do my best to answer any questions, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Any questions for Mr. Maury?
Mr. President?
Mr. Oderman?
Mr. Maury, you know, and maybe this isn't worthwhile, but when I was going through these charts, reviewing this earlier today, you know, 2020 was such an aberrational year. I mean, do you think it would be worthwhile to include 2019 numbers, just to see how it trended in a, in a normal year?
Yes, Commissioner Oderman.
Yeah, because, I mean, I mean, you look at the, the blue to the red this year, and it's, it's just, it's really hard to see if we're trending normally, because 2020 was such a different year, and I hope we, I hope we can put it in the rearview mirror, and we don't ever have to live through it again. But I think maybe that would give us a better idea of, you know, historical trends on these different things. And if you don't wanna, and you don't have time to, like, actually illustrate it in the charts, maybe sending that information out would be helpful.
Yes, Commissioner Oderman, I think that's, I think that's a great point, and I'd be happy to do that. I can certainly add it on the chart and see how it looks. If it gets a little messy, we can, we can include that information in your packet.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Frederick, you have contact with us again?
Yeah, I'm back on.
Good deal. Do you have any questions on the monthly financial?
No, I was just thinking of all that, so.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Maury? Now I look for a motion on the monthly financial report.
I'd move to approve the monthly financial report.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is 5 o'clock, and we have a 5 o'clock timetable. We have an update from Abel. Mrs. Anderson?
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to come and speak to you today. I almost, almost don't have a request for you. So I'll get into that in a little bit. I think Rita said I have like an hour, so. She knows me. What I want to at least do today is let you know about how we got into the T-Rex Plaza. So just going back a ways, we went in March or, yes, I think it was, no, May 2019. We were interested in expanding our thrift center and we've been up at the mall for a while. Our Decade store had been there operating for quite a bit of time. Our community has been so very generous with donations that at one point we said, well, why don't we try to grab this extra space that's available and not being used? So we went to the owner and said, how much would you lease that space for? And it was quite a large number. And we thought that is just not going to work for us. Would you mind thinking about us buying the T-Rex? And he said, yes, I think we, you could buy the T-Rex for this amount and I want it sold by December of 2019. So we scrambled and hurried from May to 2010 December to get financing ready and get all of our packages put together. And we purchased the, the T-Rex with the intent, again, of expansion, or at least bringing some of our sources back together in 2000, you know, as soon as we could, try to merge into one building. Lo and behold, we had not been out talking to any of you. So this might be a surprise. It seems like it's a surprise to people now that there's actual work being done. And by the way, Tracy's here, just introducing you to who our contractor is, the two trucks are up there. And our community doesn't even know that we purchased the mall. And there's good reason for that. COVID hit. We purchased it in December and by March of 2020, we were immersed in COVID. And we just haven't had a chance to get out and tell people about this project. So surprise, all of you listeners, ABEL has bought this, this T-Rex. So that's what's going on. I wanted to be sure to, if I can get the slides to go just to update you on purposes, again, why? Go back through that, what the vision is, and just run through these slides. So if you want to go to the first slide, Rita? Oh, there's our vision. And we actually picked colors out, which were colors that are going to be really close to this particular look. So this is our look for the T-Rex and the facade. This is our first shot, is trying to get that facade taken care of. And why we're doing it is to create employment for people with disabilities. There is a belief system across the, the United States that it is not that difficult to employ people with disabilities. And we find that's not the case. Their impressions of how that's to be done and our impressions of how it actually works is a mismatch. We find we have to take much more control of employment and much more control over housing in order for people to have and to lead great lives. And so we purchased this with that intent is to find ways to get people employed. So we've also found that with public policy, not only do they have a mismatch, they are creating policy measures that actually will shrink employment and create it to be more difficult. So we are going to continue to press forward and our job, our work at the T-Rex is to bring people into a employment arena, support them, and get them to interact with the general public. And that's why this purchase is taking place. So how are we doing that? And we are expanding space to keep people working. We have jobs with supports in multiple locations. So you can see there are people at the thrift store. There are people who are taking care of and cleaning the environment, tagging clothes, cleaning clothes, being at the cash registers. So our intent is to make as many community-integrated jobs as possible. How we're doing that again is just entrepreneurial activities and trying to find ways, again, that people can continue to be more and more engaged. You look at before and after, this was the look, the before is the look in 2019 when we purchased this building. And our goal, our immediate goal, was to get this cleaned up. And so in 2020, we did do that. And that's the after picture. We put concrete in and that was a major improvement. Talked to Cliff Newby about that and he will tell you. So major improvement right away. This is, again, the before and after as we hoped. This was original, then we have the current building. Well, it's not looking like that anymore. You'll see the demo's been done. And then the future is looking at that facade. We hope to also, this, this building's complicated and it, it's giving our GT architects quite a nightmare because it's wrapped up with four grant potentials. So two grants are actually, have actually been completed and approved. This is one of the grants we have is for a universal adult changing bathroom. We are the queen of accessibilities for bathrooms. We've been spending a lot of time on how to help people in our community be able to access bathrooms. And we have been asked at ABEL from people who are having some physical disabilities, temporary, sometimes temporary, sometimes long-term, to can we use your bathrooms? And that's kind of hard to pull off. So we said, well, why don't we create a universal changing opportunity for our community that anybody can use and access? So we have a, this is not exactly how it looks, but some of the features are there that we're looking at. So you'll see there's a ceiling track lift. That's one of the things we are trying to put into this bathroom. There's a adult changing table. And we're looking at a shower and a bathtub in ours that is going to be locked behind the door. So we have control over that bathroom. And then anybody that needs to use it, we'll open it up and, and help them get through that process. So if you have travelers, if we have people coming to our community that are traveling, or we have people who have a temporary disability and can't use their own bathroom, this is something that we're hoping to get available, make available to our community. And that's through a community development block grant that you as a city are sponsoring. So you probably know about this one. But that's what that's about. We have an energy improvement grant that, oh, this has been a long process. We got turned down last year. No offense, but it sounds like somebody cheated. Not us, because we didn't get it. But because of that, we had to go back and do a whole bunch more work. And that is still in the process of being accepted. It's a REAP grant through USDA. So we're hoping to get that. And that's going to help with lighting, insulation, HVAC. We took the windows and doors out because there just wasn't enough energy improvements to make that score well. So we have not heard back on that one. The other grant that we're hoping to do, and if you move and go to the next slide, we're hoping to do a self-canopy, which is for dropping off donations so that our people who are giving to us have some place to do that out of the elements. But it's also to support our people that are coming to work and can come in out of the elements as well. So we're hoping to do a self-canopy at some point. We need to redo the southeast entrance. So we're putting ourselves down as last priority on that facade. So you'll see, we may just be looking the way we are now and the rest of it gets redone. That's for our tenants. The parking lot, we're hoping to do the east and remaining south. And actually, the north is going to be done for sure, but the east and south might not be. We've needed to do some remodeling in some of our stores just to make them much more accessible throughout the building, again, for employment reasons. And we hope to do some internal improvements also. So as we say, as grants become available, and there is a mother grant, I call it the Motherlow Grant, and it's a new market tax credit that we've applied for. And that is a really nice grant. If we can get that, which we'll find out in June or July, if we can get that, then all systems go. We have to hurry and get a lot of things done. Tracy knows that. He assures me that, that he can come. And it, he's going to have less hair and more gray. But he assures me he can try to pull that off. So you might see a lot more activity going on as we get going. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think you have the PowerPoint. I think you have notes on this project. And I'm a little less than an hour, so sorry that I didn't entertain you for a little longer, but if there are any questions.
Any questions for Mary on this project?
So spread the word. We are the owners and the way, again, we're affording this project, just because that will come up, create a financing that really anybody can get to. These grants are also accessible, I think, to general public. So a lot of the things that we're doing are available to other people. We just are pretty good at finding packages right now.
Mr. President?
Mr. Oderman?
I just wanted to commend you guys for seizing this opportunity, because I think there's a lot of things like this in the community that maybe nobody knew this was for sale.
Well, it was not. We had to ask.
Well, exactly, exactly. And you're, and you're doing, you're improving the space. You're, you're doing a lot of investment into the space and that's.
It is.
Not only, it's not only good for you guys, but it's good for the community.
Well, thank you, John, for making that comment. And I want to say that that's the value of a nonprofit. We are not, we're putting a lot of work into it, but it's not for any individual benefit. It's for the benefit of this whole project. So whatever we have profits that are made in this project, they go back into the building or back into services. So it's not like a single owner that is, you know, bringing income in. So that's what you can expect from this is continued improvement and investment in the community.
The backside, the, on the west, looks amazing.
Oh, isn't it though? Although we need paint on the building. So where, when I said.
With time, right?
Yeah. When I said that I didn't come with a request, there are a few things that the city could help us with. 11th Street, which we've been talking to Brian a little bit about and Scott, is if that could be, if we could concrete that, if we're going to do the concrete, maybe that's some place where the city could come in and help with.
Just for Commissioners' reference, it's the street that's not a street, but.
Crap.
It's in between the State Farm and the gas station that runs east-west. It's street to nowhere. I think at one point, it was supposed to connect up the hill, but it never happened. And so it's just a very short section. How long do you think, Brian? You probably, you've probably researched how, how long it is exactly, but.
It's okay, Brian, you just think about it. The other thing.
Worth of road space. And it, and it does link all the homeowners along that who, who enjoy using the space without, without having to worry about that it's in the cities right of way. So there's a few things that we'd have to do to, to reel that back in if we were going to pave it all the way through. And, and we're looking at options. And our Public Works Director has already kind of scoped it out and had his staff look at it, so has our city engineer. And there's some options that.
Oh, good.
But it is going to be a process because we will, we will be, if we change anything, we will be looking our right of way with homeowners that are enjoying parking their items along the backs of their fence line.
So that, that's one of the things in just landscaping. We share landscaping together. And signs, you know, if there's an ability to put a sign, allow us to put a nice sign in for that whole area might be interesting, so.
Last year, we had put some money in the budget and we didn't use it this year for the digital signs, if you remember, Mrs. Carlson.
President Decker, $60,000 was set aside for this year and $60,000 for next year for six, six directions, signs for their entrance of our city.
Right. So the, the one that kind of sits on the corner of the property there with the, on the northeast corner, we'll have to look at that along with something else, get, get an RFP out to start that project. I know the one sign that's kind of hidden that we're kind of waiting is on 10th and East, the Business Loop over there, because let that intersection work its way out before we go in. But we'll have that discussion again, budget here shortly. So we want to update the sign.
Okay. We, we would love to have a meeting, and I haven't set that up yet, with American Bank Center and T-Rex, Conoco, City, ourselves, as we might be able to encompass a whole plan. That might be nice, so. And we've been working well with the city. Loretta's been great to work with, as has Leonard and Walter. So continue to work on that. So thanks, John. So thanks for the comment. Anything else?
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Frederick?
Sorry, no, I just would like to reiterate congratulations on purchasing the building because you're going to do amazing things with it. It's going to really improve that area, so.
Well, well, thank you. And again, as a nonprofit, it, the beauty of that is being able to invest right back in to our community. So please understand that, that I think that's unique. And I'm hoping, because, because we've been challenged in some ways about why is a nonprofit and where are you getting your dollars? Well, we're creative and we've got creative financing, but it's a good thing for our community to have a nonprofit because we're, we're differently motivated, so.
Well, I think, I think when people see that, it motivates them to support you guys.
Oh, I hope so.
Yeah.
Bring donations.
Yeah.
And other financing. We have not named the building yet, so. We, we didn't make an ass.
Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, just throwing it out to our audience, whoever's on TV. Someone will want to come out and help us. Thank you guys so very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Also at this time, we have our public comments not on the agenda. So if there are any items that the public wishes to discuss that were not on the agenda this evening, please come forward, state your name and let us know your, your comments or issues with, within the city. You can also call in to our phone number, which is area code 701-456-7006. Anyone from the public have any comments pertaining to items not on the agenda? Again, if you're watching online, you may call in, Anyone from the public? Seeing no one present has any comments and hearing no one online has any comments, I will end the public comments section. We will continue back to administration. Mr. Winningham, we have a tobacco dealer license.
Mr. President and Commissioners, what you'll see in your packet before you is a renewal of a tobacco license by a business owner, Elevate, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any questions for Mr. Winningham on this tobacco license? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Commissioner Frederick says second. All right. Commissioner Frederick, seconds. Any further discussion on the tobacco license? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a library annual report. Library Director Annan, welcome.
Thank you, President Deckert and Commissioners. I'm here today to give you an annual report for a very, very special year that was 2020, and then to present some highlights about what's happening at the library going forward. I will just point out on this first screen, the picture that I have up there is a bunch of kids that last February, before everything went crazy, had earned in one of the reading programs. We do a, a privileged event for teens that they have to earn, and it's an all-night lock-in. So that's some kids that were doing a scavenger hunt activity, I believe. But they were very sad that we couldn't do it again this year. We'll like to in the future, but that's what that picture is. If I can figure out the clicker. Oh, they got it for me. Thank you. So these are some of the standard annual report things that we have to give every year, but of course, not a completely standard year. So we were open to the public 3,388 hours last year. That includes 2,501 hours at the main library, 168 hours in the bookmobile, which made 80 stops and traveled 4,122 miles last year in spite of being closed more than half of the year. And 719 hours that were in Magora. Of course, that is down from the about 5,000 across our sites that we would be open in a regular year. And that is because of pandemic things that happened. So as you can see, we were actually closed to the public from March 16th, which kind of came along suddenly through the 31st of May. During June, the first four weeks, we were open only on an appointment basis. And then we reopened on June 29th for just weekday hours. The bookmobile resumed at Slope County routes in November, and we reopened for full regular hours at the main branch, including evenings and weekends on November the 9th. So that is how our hours ran during 2020. Hold on one second, please, on the previous slide. So our visitors to the main library, again, it's a much lower number than you will have seen in the past, has everything to do with the number of hours we were open and people's feelings about being out in public during the last year. But we did see 38,836 people visit the library in spite of everything. Although programs stopped at, or in-person programs stopped on March 16th, we did have 1,608 people attend public programs before that. We have 10,626 registered borrowers at the library as of December 31st. We saw 58,868 visits to our website. That's significantly more than in the past for a couple of reasons. We'll probably talk about in a minute. We did, in spite of everything, have more than 68,000 connections to our public wifi. 6,566, 67 people were able to use our public computers in total, and we currently have 2,446 followers on our Facebook page. And now we can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So as we said, it was a very special year, and there are some things that were new, mostly that started as mitigations, if you will, for COVID and changes in delivery. So we closed on March the 16th very suddenly and without really any opportunity to prepare ahead of that. But we quickly tried to get in place some things that we could do in spite of being closed that would continue to serve our public. And two of those things that we did was first of all, to begin to allow people through our website to make requests for materials, and we mailed them out in packages. So 512 packages were mailed out between the end of March and June. We let people request three items. That's significantly less than they normally would be allowed to take out, but postage is expensive. So they could have three items, and when they return them, they could ask for three more. And that's how we handled that. Excuse me. Then shortly after that, in May, we began doing curbside delivery, which we had done 223 curbside deliveries in May and June. We have continued to do that on a request basis and continue to today. We have one patron, for instance, who is Dr. Yett Mayo, who just does not feel that coming out in public is safe. But she comes real regularly and picks up her materials curbside. So we see that and some other things that I'll talk about in a minute as being lessons learned and ways that we can improve our services on an even longer ongoing basis. We also have some additional online materials that we added during the last year. I've highlighted two of them. One was Hoopla, and that is Overdrive and Libby is what our usual ebook checkouts are done. Hoopla is a similar type of thing, but it's for older materials. So if you go into Overdrive, you're going to get something generally that was published in the last couple of years, largely because you have to purchase that as, as if you were purchasing it as a book. And for one or two people to check out, you don't want to pay that much money for something. Well, Hoopla is a service where they charge us, and it's usually less than $2 on a per-transaction basis. So if somebody wants some older materials, they can check it out that way and have it in an electronic format, and they use it, and we're charged between usually $1 to $2 for their use. So that was a way we were able to expand what is available to people and make sure they could get what they wanted when they couldn't come in-house. We also added Medici TV, which was actually earlier in the year. That's something that if you at all enjoy classical music or dance, I wish you would go out and check it out. It streams full concerts. So lots of material there. There's also some master classes. I was trying to think of my term there, but master classes that are, are offered for musicians and other really unique things. So that, and also on the bottom there, you see a shot of our online resources page. And each one of those little blue tabs there clicks into a whole bunch of more things. So our staff worked really hard on putting together a pretty comprehensive listing of things that people could access electronically, particularly hoping that was helpful for those who were doing learning at home. And then, of course, the other new thing was virtual collections. We'll talk about that in a minute. So our collections, and again, you see this every year, but our collections all in total are 154,882 items. Those are the things that people can check out in one fashion or another. So print materials there shows 81,819. What that really means is all the physical materials in the library. So that is books and, and magazines, but it's also DVDs and audiobooks and that sort of thing. It's anything physical that you can take out. Electronic books, well, anything, sorry, I miss speaking a little bit, but it, it comprises more than just books, I guess is what I was trying to say. Electronic books, we have 38,779 that we have owned access to. So that's not the Hoopla that I was talking about earlier, but owned access, some of that we share with other libraries around the state, other public libraries. We have audiobooks, and all of our CDs are audiobooks. We don't have music. But 2,785 of those that you can come into the library and take out, and 16,208 that are downloadable. That is an area where our collection has grown a whole lot because there are still people that come in real regularly to get our CDs, but most people want to stream. And so we've added a lot of streaming audio materials. And then videos and DVDs, and of course, that's exactly the, the flip side. 11,221 DVDs we have in-house. That's a very heavily used working collection, so come and check it out. We've got popular things. We've got kids' things. We have some unusual stuff. So a real broad selection. And then we do have a few, 1,451 of downloadable videos as well. And other items, 2,619. I always like to take a minute to talk about what other items means because that sounds pretty nebulous when you've talked about all those other numbers. But I've got some of our special items listed up there on the top of the screen, and I always like to remind people at this time of year especially. We do have North Dakota State Park passes that you can check out. So if you want to go to the state parks, it checks out for a week. You can go camping with family. You can go for a day or a weekend. We only have three of those, but we love to see them checked out. Well, you think, you can check them all year round, but especially in the summertime, we, we really like to see those moved. That's a benefit that comes from the North Dakota State Parks. We have book club kits. If you have a book club, LeapFrogs and Me readers are electronic reading devices, especially for preschool-aged children. Games are new, and I would encourage you to come and check out our game collection at some point in time. And then learning bundles. And this is something that while we were closed, is one of the things our children's librarian worked very, very hard on. So those learning bundles, you can check out. It's on the topic. So for the real small kids, there's shapes, there's colors, there's dinosaurs. And on the topic, you will find inside of that bundle, two books, or three, two or three books, usually a DVD with something related and a game of some kind. And then the real added bonus in there, there is a, a learning pamphlet that is created entirely by our children's librarian that has some questions and, and learning activities and things on the subject that you can do with your child or children. So that's one. If you've got kids, come and check them out for sure. We are expecting to have our first baby bundles. So that's things geared towards toddlers to be out late this summer. And then we can go to the next. Thank you. So before I go on to the next thing, I'm going to point out the picture here, too. I talked about games. We have the opportunity, you can check out lots of games that you've probably never heard of. So it's that kind of thing that you don't want to actually buy for your family, but it might be real fun to have it for a week and play. But we also have some of the real standard games, but we try to have them in a little different format. So you see here, we've got the battleship. That is actually an electronic one. So it's got some batteries in it, and it's got lights, and it's got sound. And it's not in the library right now. You're going to want to put it on hold if you want that one because it's out a lot. We have one that's called Dinosaur Escape. That's for with kids. If you want light clue, we have Downton Abbey Clue. We have Game of Thrones, Monopoly. So we, we try to do some different kinds of fun things that your family can enjoy that maybe you really don't want to lay out the money for personally, but when we share it with a whole community, it can be a lot of fun. So then we come to our actual checkouts for this last year. And again, it looks a lot different than in years previous. But in spite of everything, we did have 70,537 print, and this is where it really is, physical item, circulations that have, happened. 32,129 of those were adult materials. And as always, that's even more with the kids, 38,408. What continues to grow, and it was on a very much a growing trajectory, but this year only helped that, of course, is the electronic loan. So we had 28,501 electronic items that went out. 14,237 of those were ebooks. 14,000, almost as many were e-audio, and then a few streaming videos. A number you may not have always seen before, but 1,925 retrievals of database content. So that's those things that we've been curating and lists and trying to put out there. Those are website clicks, but these are actually from the databases that we pay for or that the state library pays for. So that's what those are. We continue to participate in a robust way in interlibrary loan, particularly around the state, but somewhat nationally, too. And we did loan 2,335 items to other libraries this last year and borrowed 744 items for our patrons that came from other libraries. So library programming highlights, and this is another one of those things where this year was really different. So at the beginning of the year through, through March, we had our usual programs. We ran 48 programs. In that first two and a half months, we had 1,608 individuals come in and attend those. Before March 16th, AARP had helped 268 different individuals to be able to file their taxes. So March 16th, we closed and we said, okay, we don't know how long this is going to go on, but we expect it's going to be a while. And we started re-envisioning how we provide those same kinds of services. And what we did is a combination of some take-and-make things and virtual programming. So we did, already by April, we had storytimes of being done virtually. We put it out, the links are through Facebook. We did four different storytimes a week. So there's a lot of variety there. The bedtime storytimes that we did is something that was actually brand-new. We've never done that program before. But that is, and is one that we may consider going on in an online fashion as we go forward. It was very popular. The pictures there, I listed a bunch of the other different kinds of things, pretty much all the stuff that we would usually do in the library. We found a way to do it streaming digitally. Pictures there, of course, our children's librarian there in one of her many storytime videos. You can see one of the paint videos and a screen from Lit Trivia that we did. So lots and lots of those things. And through the end of December, we actually had 28,163 views of our virtual programs, which exceeds anything we've ever actually had in in-person attendance. So there was a lot of work, and I'm very, very proud of my staff for the way they came together and put in the effort and learned to do some new things so we could continue to serve the public. So the other thing is reading programs. Once again, we've always done that in one particular way. And we started out the year with our winter reading program. I put on there old school because we did it the way we always have with paper slips and people sign up and all of that sort of thing. And we did have really great best-ever attendance in that program at the beginning of last year. So 6,310 early literacy activities that were created, were participated in by 60 different preschoolers and their families. That's a high of all time, actually. And 192,000-plus minutes that were read by 120 different kids. I told you that there were some teens, there were 48 teens that participated. Of those 20 earned their lock, ability to come to the lock-in. But in total, all of them together read 1,536 hours. And during the school year, in two months, that's a lot of reading. We were really pleased with that. And then we had 63 adults also participate. And as you can see, we counted their participation in pages. So that was the winter reading program. Once again, we're closed. We've come to the realization that we're not going to have the usual summer reading program that we all love so much. And we said, how can, how can we do this? And what we got is a product that's called Beanstack. And coming out of 2020, we really had the opportunity to learn some things. And we've got things that we will take forward in our services forever, and Beanstack is one of them. People are able to sign up and log their reading virtually. No more paper slips for us to count, no more them necessarily having to come into the library and remember to fill out their slips and all of that. You can log it as you go. It's really convenient. Everybody seems to like it, and it's actually a lot less work for staff. Our children's librarian puts in a lot of work with the badges behind scenes, but. So those numbers look different than they have because what you do now, of course, is earn badges. And so 64 preschoolers were busy last summer. They earned 656 badges, and each badge equals 10 activities completed. So that's pretty awesome. We had 117 kids that earned more than 1,000 badges at 100 minutes each. 41 teens, 580 badges at 120 minutes each. And we had 90 adults. I have all-time high adult participation. And of course, there's lots of reasons why that might be. Maybe some folks were at home, et cetera. But we also find there are folks that actually like the online, being able to go in and just log their stuff at, at home. And so we're, we're excited about that. What we found with Beanstack is that it's real easy to take those two big programs that we've always done and make smaller versions of them throughout the year that people can participate. And so in the fall, we had a Fall Into Reading program. And in, in October, we had a spooktacular challenge where we challenged people to do a certain amount. And you can see our participation numbers there. The other brand-new thing we have is Rubber Ducky Club is what we're calling it. We've talked for a long time about wanting to be able to do the 1,000 books before kindergarten. That's one of those targets, they say, as an indicator of kid's success when they get to school. And Rubber Ducky Club, which we've started, is, is our chance to help families to do that and to keep track of, of their reading and win some little prizes for their kids. So all that said, we're going to go on to some highlights of what's happening here. So what was on the last slide, and it's on this one, too, so you don't have to go back. But our Beanstack that we're using again, and Magic, Myth and Mischief is our theme for the summer. We had our summer reading program kickoff on May the 29th. I hope I've got, I think I've got the right date. There it was a Saturday, the Saturday before June, June 1st. So whatever that date was. Of course, everybody's anxious to get out now, and we've always had a lot of people come to our summer reading kickoff. But we had estimated about 600 in attendance that day. It was awesome. We had, you see the picture there of the kids with the shields. So we had those shields for each kid. And we had 300 of them, and we were out before noon. Other pictures there, there's some pool noodle jousting, which we will show you later. A little girl dressed, came dressed as a princess, and she's got a dragon egg she found. We had two ladies that were volunteers that came in dressed as fairies, and they gave some things, little hats and wands and things until they ran out, which they ran out pretty early, too, actually, but there's a little gal there. So that was a really fun day and a beginning of what we are looking forward to as a really fun summer. We have missed having people in and doing these kind of things. And so then this is just showing, we have a full slate of all of our activities in person again this summer. So if anything you liked doing before, come out. We're doing it now. We've got storytimes. We've got, we had a magic show that was there last week. We have a, an art workshop that's coming next week. We do have one virtual performer, so we're keeping a little bit of those things that we've learned that people also like. And that one will be Japanese folk tales and origami. It will be available on our Facebook site the last week of June going into July. Steam, we had a picture there of these pictures that we've got up there. That's already happened this summer. So we've got an adult craft club there. That was a lot of fun. We have a young man there with the robot that he built in Steam. We have some new, they're called Cublets, that you can use to teach programming to kids. We got those through a partnership between the Friends of the Library and Family Fair. So those of you that have been giving us your Family Fair receipts, this is what we did with it. And we are eligible and working towards our next round for that. So please keep bringing us those receipts. Here's this young man with the robot that he programmed using the Cublets. We've got a picture there from Lego Club. We've got a picture there from Lego Club. So one thing I will just comment on regarding that, we did see this summer as an opportunity to take a reset. Say we haven't had any programs in a while, let's think about we've learned, what we've learned while we're closed, let's think about issues that we had before. And among the changes we've made is that we are doing registration for most of our programs. Now, if, what we're telling everybody, if you didn't get registered and you see we have something, you can come on in, and if we still have room, we'll, we'll let you come in. But registering guarantees you a seat, and what's really important is we're taking this opportunity to say, okay, this is the time where we're going to say there's a cap on how many kids can come to Steam, and we can have enough materials and enough staff support for them to really be able to fully participate successfully in those activities. Doesn't do any good to have sixty kids to show up for, for robots, okay, even when it is a team activity. So we are doing the same Steam program twice during the week, so there's two different days and opportunities to sign up for it. But we've had a lot of questions about it, so this is our rationale, part of what we're, we're using with signups. Yes, I do see that for things like Steam and Lego Club, that those signups are something that we will continue doing going forward. It allows us to have the opportunity to be really prepared and make sure that there's enough space and everything that's needed for every participant to be able to fully engage and have a good experience. So this slide, once again, people ask all the time, how do we know what your activities are? I would like to say that if you have a suggestion for us, we are very open to hearing that. We're trying to get the news out there as much as we can. You can always pick up a print calendar in the library. We do have two or three events every day that were open this summer, so there's that. It goes out in the Dickinson Press, her voice puts it out for us. You can go to our website, go to Facebook. We're doing our best to get the word out there as much as we can. But if you have other suggestions for ways we can share, we would be very happy to hear about those. Mostly, I'd suggest our website, because that's the place from which you will be able to sign up for those activities. I will just list one thing that isn't on any of those places, but a little teaser, we are doing some pop-up sort of things, and we do have some librarians that are going to be downtown at First on First. Our children's librarian will be there on Thursday. I'm not going to tell you what character she's coming as, you've got to come and find out, but she will be there, happy to take pictures with you from the library and to just have fun. So I'm going to finish with this, and then we've got two short video clips from the reading carnival to show you. But library hours, if you don't know, it's Monday through Thursday, nine to eight, Friday nine to six, Saturday nine to five, and our phone number is there. If you need help, we're always glad to help by phone. So what's coming up next here, every year, our fire department and police department send some people down to our carnival. Their kids love to see the fire truck and to work with that. The officers that were down there this time, a couple of them very graciously agreed to do pool noodle jousting with a couple of the kids, so just for a little bit of fun here, we'll show you a couple of those. Little bit hard to see it, but if you go out to Facebook, you can watch several clips of that, and yeah, the kids loved it, it was really great. So that is what I have for you today. Thank you for your time and attention, and do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Ennam. I have one, on the loan program, I noticed, is that just upon, if an individual's looking for something that, and you don't have it, you just send out a request? Just, is that just North Dakota libraries?
No, it is not. One of the nice things with our, our new library system that went in place two years ago is that you can put a hold on something, and if we don't have it or if ours checked out, it will automatically go to other Oden libraries around the state, and they just mail it. So that's, that's our first level of, or layer of. If you're needing something more unusual, and a lot of times people, for instance, that are doing family research or other things like that, we can request from any country or any library in the country that has an OCLC account. And we do bring in, at, at any given time, there's a number of items that we have out, and of course, we do lend in that fashion as well.
All right. Is there any other questions, Ms. Ennam? Commissioner Frederick?
No, thank you.
Sorry.
We'll move on to our HR monthly report. Mrs. Nomenick?
Thank you to President Decker, Commissioners. First on the list, we have the Utilities Manager. This position is on hold at this time. We continue to search for police officers. We have three openings. Two of them have been hired, went through orientation just this week, and we have one in the background phase. We have a couple limited, our library assistants open, and two of those positions were both filled, and those people have been hired. We have two actually water reclamation facility operator positions. One of them, an offer was made and is in the background, and the other position, we are just opening up again. Code Enforcement Officer, we had a full-time position open for that, and then that position was filled with our seasonal code enforcement officer that had been working for us for a couple of years now. Solid Waste Recycling Operator, we had two positions open, and we'll be doing interviews soon for those. Two positions open for Communication Specialist. They are in the back, in the interview phase right now. The Environmental Compliance Specialist Position, interviews were done for that, and we have made an offer, and that person is in the background. We had two Police Lieutenant Internal openings, and those interviews will be held next week. Animal Control Officer, we recently had an opening. Interviews will be scheduled for those soon, for that position. Solid Waste Recycling Operator, we have two openings there. Oops, sorry, that's a repeat. Building Inspector Three, that position closes today. That's an internal opening. Street Maintenance Operator, we're working on getting that one opened up. And then we go to our seasonal positions. We have some positions open in most departments. I think Buildings and Grounds is the only one that is full right now, but we, we do have openings in Water Utilities for Seasonal, Street Department. We did fill the Engineering Position for Seasonal, and that person's in the background. We do have some Museum Positions open, and Forestry, looks like those probably are filled too. We just have one left in background, so finally getting going on those, and I will take any questions if you have anything.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenick. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenick on the monthly Human Resources Report? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Move into Public Safety, and we have the monthly Police Department Report. Chief Dossinger?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. I have before you the May monthly report for the Dickinson Police Department. For the month of May, we responded to 2,225 calls for service. The top five calls for service included, we responded to 116 suspicious person-vehicle calls, 92 speak-with-an-officer calls, 76 welfare checks, 54 domestic violence calls, and we conducted 54 bar checks for the month of May. We responded to 66 total accidents. Unfortunately, we did have one fatality in, within our community for the month of May. We responded to injury accidents, 15 hit-and-run accidents, and 48 property accidents. We conducted 406 traffic stops. There were 112 citations issued and 209 warnings issued. The top five traffic violations cited for the month include, was led by speeding with 45. There were 18 citations issued for driving without liability insurance, 13 care-required citations issued, nine for failure to register a motor vehicle, and four for red light and no valid driver's license issued were tied. Arrests for the month were led by warrants with 42 arrests, and there were also 38 drug-related arrests in the month of May. Behavior health calls, we were very busy in the month of May with the behavior health calls, responded to 100 of them in total, 76 of them were welfare checks, six mental health calls, 12 intoxicated subject calls, and six suicidal threat calls. Intoxicated subject calls are calls in which you receive a call from a citizen stating that there's somebody wandering our streets that appears to be impaired and obviously needs some, some law enforcement assistance, or some medical assistance in relationship with that. Our Criminal Investigative Division was fairly busy for the month of May. They came into the month with 54 open cases that they were actively working, I'm sorry, they're involved in 54 incidents that they added in the month of May, and they carried 45 open investigations into the month from April. They did complete three police officer background investigations from applicants that had applied for us and were given conditional offers. Two applicants completed the polygraph and background process, and one withdrew during the background process of the hiring. They did respond to seven call-outs, two were for burglaries. They did respond to one domestic violence call, which involved an officer involved shooting. There was also felony weapon offense, terrorizing, sexual assault, and two unintended death calls, and which they were called out after hours to assist the patrol division with. Some of the Criminal Investigative Division highlights for the month, they did make an arrest of a male who possessed child pornography, did arrest a male for terrorizing comments from his strange girlfriend, and they did make an arrest involved in a felony burglary involving firearms. Suspect identified and criminal charges are pending on that one. Some of, synopsis from the training that our, our staff went through for the month of May. There were four officers that completed SWAT Basic, which was held in Fargo, which was 40 hours. We did have an officer that attended Controlled Force in Mandan, which was 32-hour course. We did have two officers which attended the International Association of Chiefs of Police Tech Conference at the Public Safety Center in Dickinson, just 24 hours. We did have two officers that completed Bike Patrol Training in the city of Minut. As you know, summer's approaching us, and we do have Bike Patrol officers out there, especially with the First on First events. So we did have officers attend training on that. We did have 10 officers, or one officer that attended a Building Connections Training in Bismarck, which was a 20-hour course, and we did have one officer that attended a Drug Recognition Expert Conference in Wyoming, and we did have, are completing the process of completing emergency vehicle operations training and spike, spike strip training in the city of Dickinson for all our patrol staff. So far in the month of May, we had 14 officers that had completed that portion of it. Our dispatch center was fairly busy. As you can see, the emergency calls, that 911 calls was up. They answered 909 911 calls for the month. They also answered 5,376 non-emergency calls and 1,403 outbound calls. Current staffing levels, they, they worked the month of May with 10 full-time communication specialists. Two are currently in the training portion of it, expected to complete the training at the end of July. And as HR Shelley Nomenick had mentioned, we do have, are going through the hiring process for two remaining positions as well. They began, siren testing began in the month of May in preparation for the summer storm season, and we did have two phone calls, phone councils that went down briefly, most likely due to weather-related events. Our building was struck by lightning, and it has caused some, some issues with that. So we are currently down three line ports coming into our dispatch center, which will be refreshed when some of the siren updates are completed in the 2021. Our animal shelter was fairly busy. They responded to 159 animal calls. Our Animal Patrol Division, five involved surrendered animals, eight lost animals. They did respond to 90 running-at-large calls, four animal neglect calls, 26 animal complaints, six animal bites, and 20 barking dog calls. That was kind of a quick synopsis of the May activities for the Dickinson Police Department. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief Dossinger. Any questions for Chief Dossinger on the police report?
Mr. President.
Mr. Odomin.
Chief Dossinger, on the behavioral health side of things, I know that there's a lot of situations where there's an bed available for somebody, and so they are remanded to your custody, and they spend the night in jail. Would that be something that you could report to us in the future, like on how often that's happened in a given month, how many individuals that's happened to? Because, I mean, I, I do think that that's valuable information for us and for the community to have that, hey, this is, this is a, a real problem in terms of people that need help, but there's no place for them to go because the state hospital's full, or, you know, the, the, the private practitioners like in Fargo or Bismarck, or the nonprofits that provide those services. It's such a serious concern that, but there, there's no place for them to go, and we don't have the beds here in town.
That's correct. I certainly can do report on that. And sometimes it's just timing. Sometimes they're actually, if there's a mental health hold placed on them, they are held at the, at the Southwest Multi-City Correctional Center until transportation can be arranged from the Sheriff's Department to take them to there for, for assistance. So I certainly can report to that in the future.
And, and you know, that would be something that would be interested, I'd be interested in hearing too, and maybe it's a conversation with the county commissioners, but how much we're spending on an annual basis for transportation of these people to the state hospital or something like that? And if we provided these beds in, in town or in the area, how much money could we save as a, as a municipality? So.
Good point. I'll try to bring that information to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Dossinger, that new program that just started, the main announcement, the state's going to assist?
Two-on-one.
Is that what it's called, two-on-one?
Yeah, the two-on-one. You guys have been utilizing that?
Yes, we have, we, we had, several months ago, we went with Badlands Human Services, and we've been trying to meet with them more frequently and trying to develop stronger working relationships with them. And basically, the two-on-one program does provide assistance to us, but it's still not a cure-all as far as they facilitate to work.
It doesn't provide any beds or?
Correct. It's basically, it takes cooperation on the individual that we're, that we're dealing with at the time to participate in the call. Sometimes that happens, sometimes it doesn't. And, but moving forward, it's definitely a resource for us. We'll just have to see how it benefits us in the future.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I just have a comment. I listened to your guys' first podcast, and this maybe is in June, so maybe I'm ruining your report for next month, but that was really great. Thank you for doing that and just, you know, being real, real people for people to listen to. And I'm a podcast junkie, so that really touched my learning, where I learn best. So that was great. Thank you for doing that.
And I want to know who came up with the name.
Basically, that was, we put, basically, sent out an email to some of our staff members. We have some creative staff members, and that actually came from our dispatcher, Jesse Kraft, that we had several names that were suggested to us and, and logos, and she was, she presented the winning one, so. But we're looking forward, moving forward with in the future, we're going to be another, do another show in the beginning of July, and we have a very special guest for, for that one. So we'll see how that goes.
It's called Off the Cuff.
Yes.
So it's, yeah, good pun.
All right. Are there any more comments, questions? Thank you, Chief Dossinger. Move on to engineering. We have downtown parking improvements.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. Before you is a task order with K L J, which falls under their master service agreement. And this task order is to look at downtown parking improvements, which would be the one-way streets that we have talked about adjacent to the new City Hall. So First Avenue West, north of First Street West, and First Street West between First Avenue and Sims. Along with this agreement is some study on traffic with Sims and First Street West. There's currently a signalized intersection there, and so they're going to take a little deeper look at that intersection and see what options we have at changing whether we have it continue to be signaled or how that looks with one-way traffic. So this task order is based on a standard hourly rate, and it's not to exceed amount of $13,850. City engineering staff is recommending approval. Do you have any questions for me on this item? Do you have any questions for me on this item?
Commissioners, any questions on this task order? I guess my only question would be why we're looking at the signals again at Sims.
This is just by the post office, there's those old signals.
Oh, okay, those.
Yeah. Are they warranted? Do we want to put in stops? Like, what are, what does that look like? What's, what their suggestion with the traffic pattern and the traffic flows that are there that we do? How does that look? And then we can bring that forward and make a decision. It's just a little more complicated than just saying, hey, we're turning this into a one-way and we're just going to leave it.
I have a question on this. Where, you know, one block, one way, is that common? Is there somewhere else that we could, like, look at one of the, like, it just seems challenging to me, but I don't know, like?
Good question. I can't think of an example off the top of my head, especially locally. You know, we don't have a lot of that in North Dakota, but I know there's other communities that have one-ways in their downtown district to help promote pedestrian travel, foot travel. And actually, what we're looking at here would add additional parking spaces, so we would have easier walk-in service when we're over at the new city hall.
And are we looking at, you know, not just closing off to one, maybe it would be, in this study, they could look at, would it be better for us to have more than just one block, be the one-way, you know, to have parking like that for the five blocks of downtown? Or, you know, not just being, yes, this would help us at the new city hall, but how could we make sure that it's not cumbersome to traffic, but could help more of downtown even? Or make it easier for the driver, you know, to know, well, this one is all one-way, this one's all one-way, or? And I'm not an expert in this area by any means, but I feel like being open to possibilities that maybe are outside just this one scope might be an interesting option, too.
What we had brought forward in scoping is just this, these two sections of one-way, but I'm sure that their traffic engineers would be able to give us some ideas if that's what you want us to do, is look at it more as a whole for downtown.
I'm thinking that Engineer Kubis had conducted a one-way study.
He did look at this, but we cannot find any of the documents that he had done in the past. So we did look for that to see if there was some kind of sketches or minutes or anything.
And his was more multi-block.
Correct, from my recollection.
Like First, like First Street basically being a one-way going west, and Second coming back east.
Kind of like you have in several parts of, like, downtown Fargo, they have.
Right, just like, but his was more, I know he had done something.
I know we had, I remember talking about it with him, I remember the discussions, but we could not find any documentation that would show what that flow looked like or what.
And the additional.
The look was.
Additional parking, all, he had looked into all of that, how much he would.
Would it be on one of the city commission meetings, maybe?
I don't know if that was ever in a formal.
Wasn't even that far along.
So Commissioner Frederick, do you remember anything?
I remember Craig bringing it up and planning and zoning and, you know, in informal settings, but I don't think it ever took any meetings for discussion, so.
His was a little more comprehensive than a couple of blocks.
I remember those meetings, we actually participated in.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was, Doc was changing two streets to one-way, one west and one east, but I don't know which one was which, but that was what he was looking at, so.
It was much more extensive. Actually, I think it started at basically Highway Twenty-two and East, I believe, to Fourth Avenue East, one section of it. It started with parking concerns from the Downtown Association, involved revamping with bump outs, and then extension of the one-way system, but I'll dig up some stuff, I did participate in a few of those meetings with them, if I can find something.
That'd be great. Thank you, Chief.
Best example I can think of of, like, one block is south side of the Old Hospital, when it used to be a one-way, way back.
Right, and that's, that's.
It's the only one I can think of.
And I'm trying to think, like, in Bismarck or Fargo, or, you know, even somewhere else that there would be a shorter one like that, but.
That's the only one I can think of in my recollection is.
Yeah, that was just because of the ambulance.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
I think that's what they set that up. Basically, it was set up for that one block, was just for, so the ambulance had.
President Decker, in Bismarck, they did get rid of a lot of one-ways, so maybe that should be looked at, too.
We'll see. If it benefits that, the parking especially in that general area, but the one thing we always have to consider is First Avenue going north and south there, well, during First on First will always pretty much be closed.
And so, yeah, and maybe, maybe just having more blocks on First Street as a one-way versus end having this one a one-way, I don't, I don't, yeah, like I said, I am, by no means an expert in dogs, but just want to make sure we, you know, we do it right, or try to.
All right. Any other comments or questions for city staff on this task order?
Move to approve.
We have motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair both aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Zurov, you have Apex Engineering Task Order Number Seven.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioner. This is, this project, 2021-11, is the first phase of a multi-phase Sim Street project. If you recall, this is the area from Fourteenth Street down to Museum Drive, where we looked at Lift Station Eleven, which is right behind Holiday Inn, down to Lift Station Eighteen, which is just south of Museum Drive. So this will look at, it allows the city to decommission the deteriorating Lift Station Eleven that we've had multiple problems with in the past, along with sewer back up in that area, and also include some additions to Lift Station Eighteen and improvements to Sims Gravity Sewer from Fourteenth Street to south of I-94. Also includes a bore of the sewer line under the interstate, which will allow us to eliminate a Lift Station Eleven. This task order is for eighteen percent of the construction costs, because there's a lot of different modifications in this, in this project. It includes preliminary, final, design bidding, construction admin, RPR, Resident Project Representative, and commissioning of the project. City staff recommends approval, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Zurov, eighteen percent, is this, as you just stated, because it's?
Because we've looked at the preliminary planning of the lift stations in that area, and we did find that we can eliminate Eleven. So there's a lot of unknowns yet on the boring under the interstate along with the AC. Right now, we're looking at not replacing the AC line under the interstate, but that could possibly happen depending on how that AC is, as best as cement pipe, is south of the interstate. So this, usually it is a not to exceed, but this is eighteen percent because of the different variations. Also, we are eliminating some of the storm that we looked at by Museum Drive, just north of, or between the museum and the law enforcement center. That was originally looked at extending the storm there, but I think we can get by and eliminate that extension of the storm.
I just think in the eighteen percent seems high. We're typically at between twelve and fourteen, so.
I could ask Representative Snyder from Apex if he'd like to comment on that?
Sure can, Mr. Zurov, President Decker and Commissioners. So one of the challenges on, you know, estimating this type of project is with the lift station, exactly what we're going to do at Lift Station Eleven and what those costs are. So normally, on a linear-type project, they are generally down, costs are generally a little bit lower, but this particular project, demoing that lift station is somewhat complicated. And then when we go down to Lift Station Eighteen, we're, the modifications to that are fairly small in construction costs versus the engineering costs we have to put into that. So we've got to redesign the electrical system, but the construction components aren't very much, and we have to purchase them and have a contractor put them in. So it tends to drive up the cost of this one a little bit more on the percentage. And that's why we just went with a percentage on this one, just to make it a little bit easier on, we don't exactly know what we're doing finally at Lift Station Eleven, and what that decommissioning is going to look like.
Do we have estimate on the construction costs?
Right now, our estimate's about one point one, one point one-three million, so eighteen percent is right around two hundred thousand.
That's quite the jump from the original fifty-seven. That's, fifty-seven was the original amount, I think, right? The original.
Yeah, so that was the planning amount, where we, that was the planning dollar amount, where we actually did the testing of Lift Station Eighteen to make sure that we could get that lift station actually pumped to where it was originally designed to. So Lift Station Eighteen was originally designed to pump up all the way to Fourteenth Street to the, to the cemetery, and when they turned that on in 2011, it didn't work. So we had to do a lot of testing on that lift station to try and figure out what's the issue with it. We found a plugged line, we worked through that. So that was really the planning step, to figure out what exactly we needed to do to go to the next step here. And as Public Works Director Zurov said, we've had those two backups at Lift Station Eleven, and this really is to eliminate that, that from ever happening again, of course.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Are there any, while Mr. Snyder's here, any other questions?
Thank you.
There are no other questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on Task Order Seven.
I move to approve Task Order Seven.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Move on to planning, and this will be the second reading of Chapter Thirty-nine Amendment, Mr. Josephson.
This is the second reading of Ordinance Seventeen Twenty for the Underground Mining Overlay District. As you recall from two weeks ago, here we go. This is a proposed amendment to Chapter Thirty-nine, which is the zoning ordinance. The purpose is to protect proposed development from potential subsidence in what's generally known as the Lehigh Area. The overlay district corresponds to areas identified both by the Public Service Commission's abandoned mine group and in the Comprehensive Plan. Adoption of this would implement Policy Three Point Ten of the city's Comprehensive Plan. Both Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommended approval, and this is the second reading. No changes were made since the first reading two weeks ago. And this is the, this is the area that that would, that that would apply, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson. Any questions for Mr. Josephson on Ordinance Seventeen Twenty? There are no questions from Mr. Josephson or city staff on Seventeen Twenty, I'd look for a motion.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions on Ordinance Seventeen Twenty, which is a Chapter Thirty-nine Amendment to the Underground Mining Overlay District? Hearing no questions or comments, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Last item up this evening is Item Ten. Commission, if you have any items you would like to bring forward that were not on the agenda, this is your time.
Mr. President.
Mr. Oderman.
Mr. Zurov, driving around town the last couple of weeks and in my own yard, but you're not worried about my yard, my yard, because it's my yard, but I've seen a, an enormous number of dead trees. What are we looking at in terms of a financial impact to the city on our landscaping costs in terms of, and I know we have a tree farm and things like that, but have we done any assessment on what it's going to cost to replace the trees that we've lost?
Commissioner Oderman, I knew when I put my microphone away you'd ask me a question. But, you know, we budget so many trees annually in the Forestry Department, there are a lot of trees, I know we had a couple of trees drop on Third Avenue recently that were off our right-of-way in private. I know they're looking at, a lot of private people are looking at trying to remove some trees. I haven't talked to the foresters specifically about right-of-way trees for this year yet. I know they, they still have, they have some that have arrived, and they're busy planting and trimming, but I have not had that conversation with them. We are doing the budgets for forestry tomorrow, along with all the other Public Works General Funds. Maybe that's something we, we try to look at and maybe increase our, our funding for trees, especially for the, for the boulevards.
Okay, thank you. You got any free ones laying around? I got four that died in my yard, so.
The one, the one thing while we have is mic out, Mr. Zurov, and this goes back to, to the earlier request from the sports complex, to a point that Mr. Winningham made of access and looking at fairway running west there, there's always been some confusion with fairway. And if it's two lanes, is it one lane with bike lane? But that road there needs to seriously be looked at, there's some dead trees there. Mr. Zurov knows, I've always had an issue with our landscaping there. The weeds drive me crazy in that middle section. But that's the, the one area maybe to consider, too, Mr. Zurov, is us relook at that road and making it maybe a true four lane. And maybe that median in the middle comes out all the way along fairway there. Just, I think it would make it a lot easier for snow removal, for one.
You're talking about going to the west?
All the way to the west, to the, the business loop, the west business loop there. Also, I think as, Commissioner, we, you know, we heard from our bound council, the amount of money we're saving, another great project was brought to us, I think, tonight in the work session with this sports complex. I think it is, it really would behoove us to get this on the agenda for the next meeting, with some recommendations from our finance department, what we can do. This will be a project that will benefit the city hospitality-wise, tax revenue-wise. We get multiple tournaments into this facility, it will benefit the city greatly. We will, we will see a return on those dollars. And this is just another quality-of-life feature I think we need to build in. I I know we have some reservations of, of how the facility will function, traffic, all of that, what, what can service it. But I, I think the entrepreneurial spirit of the individuals within the city will see the potential and pursue to build the appropriate facilities around there. And I'm even hoping if they do take those four older diamonds out, maybe there's a potential there for somebody to put some kind of facility there that would benefit or service that area. A commercial endeavor, who knows? Could be some kind of joint venture with the parking wreck and Dickinson Public Schools. So, but I do think the sooner the better that we get this, and especially since we're going to have June 30th, we're going to be meeting budget-wise.
I was just going to ask, to remind you that June 30th is the budget session. It's an all-day budget going over, so it's a perfect opportunity to look at the sports complex, and we'll be going over those revenues to have it prepared for the July 6th.
And my understanding also is that we need to bring our appetites.
I won't be here.
Where are we, where are we doing that at again?
Right here.
Right here.
Right here.
So, and bring some ideas, too. If there's, there's other things that are probably going to be tossed around. We're still involved in, in the development of this public training center. Still going to have some discussions about a possible, looking at, looking at the information that we got from CSL for the event center. There's, there's multiple things. And just a reminder for everybody out there that we did budget last year for signs, for the gateway signs, that this year I would really like to see that we go forward and do something, at least with some, get some RFPs out there to get those signs, so that once they finish that east business loop and we can put up some signs welcoming people to our city and show off what activities we have, some nice digital signs for the CBB, so.
Mr. President, thank you for bringing that up, the signs. Linda Carlson and I just had a conversation on that. There's a few, once DOT gets done, hopefully by November with that road, then there's some signage. We just reviewed the city's lots that were owned by the city with City Planner Today that gives us some sort of future use. That all goes back to incorporation into what would be the Comprehensive Plan, what would be our vision for a roadmap for the future and addressing roads that we have crafted that give us that standard 66-foot in the right-of-way. I know there's some engineers here, I'm not an engineer, but I do know that, I think that was created in 1620 by Edmund Gunter, who created this Gunter rule, you know, 100 lengths in the 66-foot. I think we can adapt technology and create rights-of-way and safe patches for our citizens and make it, make it standard for the city of Dickinson, where we can flow in and out of places that are providing recreation. I agree. So that's part of our look into the Comprehensive Plan. I think that all goes into what we're trying to do to make our city meet quality of place. So, so on the 30th of June, that'll also be helpful to look at the budget and how we adapt.
One other item that I've received a few calls, and it went silent for a while, but it seems recently that I've received calls over, is that intersection down by the loaf and jug on the south side. I don't know if activities just picked up down there. But I have received calls, and I know in past history, there was lights there. And I think there's been a few near misses. I don't know if Chief Dossinger has any information down there, but that intersection on South 22 Eighth by that loaf and jug seems to be getting a little bit on the scary side again, so I don't know if we need to look at that again.
I can pull the crash data for that intersection and have it available for the next commission meeting.
Okay.
Lauren might have some, that's a DOT.
I understand it's DOT.
I think you know the background on it. I do know that Rob Rayhorn with the DOT had put in for another project, which he didn't think would go forward, but at least would get them looking at that location again. So Chief Dossinger, if you want to share that crash data with me also, I will pass that along to the DOT. And maybe we can just keep putting a little pressure on them until we can get something in that location.
Back in the 80s, there were lights there. I have no idea why they took them out, but...
Or roundabout. I know so many people are against roundabouts, but when you go to other cities, they're so slick.
Commissioner Walla, it's just funny you say that because we weren't warranted for lights. They wanted to look at a roundabout. It didn't really work in that location very well. And by the time they got done with that study, there was not a, the traffic didn't warrant a signal any longer, and our signal went away. So unfortunately, we're still trying to fight that battle, and hopefully we can get a signalized intersection at some point.
It's a unique intersection. You have two frontage roads bleeding into it.
Four lane going to two lane.
Right. I mean, it's, it's very unique, so.
Mr. President, we'll look, we'll have our city attorney and others look at our clear present danger of, to our public to look at establishing traffic patrol points or something if DOT isn't willing, federal government isn't willing to help us. It is a dangerous intersection, I think. We'll, we'll, we'll address some, some points there. Because even last night when I was driving in that direction, it's fairly sporting, because people turn in front of you, there's pedestrians, we just had a major accident, fatality recently that were there near that location. So something to consider.
Is, is the answer, is doing something differently with the truck route, where you're not coming to that intersection?
Mr. Oderman, I will say that, there are two things in the state of Dickinson that I have learned. One of them is the truck route, which I will address.
The other one, I won't even bring up. But, but if that's the direction that the commission wants to go, I'm sure the deputy city minister will look into it.
Mr. President, obviously during the summer, there's more traffic with that. You have the activities at the Southwest Speedway. You have the Fairgrounds activities. So there's more traffic volume that's being pushed to that intersection, north-south especially, than there is during the winter. So it all depends on the timing of when they do their studies to see if it's warranted or not.
And if you didn't make it a truck route, it's all by warrant, so it has to meet so much traffic. If you reduce the traffic truck, you're never going to get a signal.
And when are they going to restrike that?
State?
State Avenue, they have to be done by the first of August, so...
It's kind of a, like, no marking.
Or, you know, drill it and then put it in the concrete, so it'll be a long-term, long-term. But yes, that was their agreement on the contract was to be done by the August, first August.
It's a free-for-all out there now.
Yeah, because there's some markings and then all of a sudden there's none.
Blades of luxury.
Anything else, Commissioners?